All right, uh, so we'll start the work session for this evening. Twenty three twenty three with the Boxer Original Stormwater Party update from Mr. Seaworth.
Um, we've talked a little bit about Fox over on past meeting and. You guys want to go back into the history or just kind of talk about roughly what's happened and where we're at now and what's happening?
I I think it'd be best if we can focus on where we're at and what we're looking to.
Okay.
Um, I think that'd be a good way to go. So I think every and correct me if I'm wrong, we're all pretty aware of the history and things of that nature, right?
That in the minutes, the link that was provided is useful in reading out the information from.
I'm gonna try and just talk for ten minutes. I got an alarm to go off. Ten minutes, um. Preston McDonald and I got on board about the same time. Uh, they voted for the Box Elder. Before we were seated, we tried to get them to hold the vote till afterwards. There were a lot of things about Fox elder that we weren't. Crazy old guy named Lee Tucker tried to talk us into going around and looking at. Why this isn't working and why it wouldn't work. Uh, Preston McDonald and I both kind of tag teamed with him and went around and looked at stuff and I kind of got to the point where I said. This guy isn't crazy. He's he's been farming his whole life here. He knows what the water does in this area. Box Elder was supposed to take a lot of houses and a lot of businesses out of the floodplain. When we finally got the FEMA LoMars, uh, the the new mapping. We only had about a hundred fifteen houses here that got taken out along creeks here, which are. Lower priced houses um that uh they got a good price on them because they're in a flood plain. They had flood insurance. That's probably the best way to have handled it and wronged it. There was a project that was done on Clark Lake and it turned out to be a fiasco. They pumped mud back up onto a property north of it. Destroyed that. It it was a heck of a mess. Uh, we're at a point now where it needs to be dredged again and something done. Lee Tucker. Richard and I fought to try and get a four bay or something, something to lower the silt content from the waters it's coming in. Drop it out and in a, you know, like through a series of little baffles. To where you could go in there and clean those baffles out. Uh, rather than have to deal with trying to get it out of a a big flat wet lake, which is what we're looking at again. Um, you guys will be making decisions with that. That's not in our purview now. That is. In the management, which is Fort Collins, twenty five percent, Laramore County, twenty five percent and. Wellington fifty percent for the cost of doing that. It may be, if it's silted up like they say it has, they're they're saying there's like six foot of silt on the bottom of it. And that that lost a whole bunch of capacity to where it has to be done again. Um, it may be, but what is it now about?
Eleven, ten.
About ten years.
There's supposed to be a new survey, but and I don't mean to interrupt here, but we have the problem. Because the previous manager and Laramore County failed to do the survey on the first one. So now we're sitting at looking for exhibit A that we're not even sure exists. It looks like we're gonna be okay for another ten years, but at the end of the next ten, you're gonna have to re-dredge. And that's gonna get pretty pricey, so.
So going definitely future, you know, it it flows in there like a a chocolate milkshake. And you got to figure out how you don't have to spend huge amounts of money every time, every ten years, but. There was a lake, the developed out here east of Wellington, and it was called Edson Reservoir. Uh, the first site that they were looking at, they didn't want to do because they'd have to buy an old farmhouse with about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Long story short, they ended up spending two million dollars uh plus on the location that they are at. By doing Edson Reservoir, that would have taken some of Wellington property out of the floodplain for development growth. That doesn't happen anymore. The overtopping of the roads that they said was a a life threatening thing. That hasn't been solved by just doing uh the the Clark Lake. One fiasco after another happened, um, when they did the east side detention facility, there was standing groundwater there. Um, I ran into a guy named Forrest, um. That uh, he was my water guy when I was kind of manager down in Milliken. Um, he said, Tim, I'm gonna send you a report. This is. Public record that was used in court, but you should look at it. I looked at it and referred to the Briarly report that we did. Through the Box Elder Association. And it showed that there was a lot of groundwater. They did. Uh, twenty seven wells and twenty four of them had substantial water in them, something like that. I asked for the Briarly report. They didn't have it. They couldn't find it. Nobody knew where it was. We uh. Ended up getting a different attorney out of Longmont, someone from outside the area, um.
Lions Gattis.
Yeah, that Lions Gattis, um, oh, I forgot his name just now, but it'll come to me. Huh?
Jeffrey Con.
Jeffrey Con, and we did it for you. And all of a sudden, we uh Freedom of Information Act, we demanded it. All of a sudden, they were able to come up with it. We looked at it. Uh, Ayers had it. That was the engineer at the time. Uh, Pinnacle had a copy of it in their files. When I read through it, it just hammered the whole idea of doing these side facility. When they did the side facility and they hired um the company to do the work. Uh, we tried to get a copy of the contract. We could not get a copy of the contract. Uh, they with these learn, they um uh. Push forward on it. I made an objection saying we don't have all of our our ducks in a row. We don't know what the uh situations are. Um, they had a lot of investors down in the Timmath area, these large. Uh, land development groups that reformatted their businesses. For investment just before this thing passed. And they were all pressing to get something done. They want with the east side to uh detect. Facility down here. There was a Anheuser-Busch line that was in the way. There was a XL uh electric line in the way. We ended up with the water, which we weren't uh privy to. So when it was all done, or we thought it was all done, we had groundwater. From my experience farming and ranching and Richards, we thought put in a French drain and get the water out of there. They came in with a uh huge program to try and get rid of the water. We fought with them and we ended up putting a drain in. Richard Seaworth became president of the authority. This project was done with a French drain type system. It's the first project that was, and Richard. Is on these people constantly. He's talking with the county. Uh, he's built uh liaisons with the county personnel. Uh, first project ever done that was done under budget and ahead of schedule. And it worked. Now we've got, that was the north-south. We wanted to do the north-south first to see if it worked. It worked. Now, there's a little bit of water on the east-west portion. There's a spring that comes out only a few hundred feet from where we terminated. There is still augmentation having to be done where that group. That east side detention facility will be Timmath, Fort Collins and Laramore County. That's another thing we did was we forced Timmath into this thing to continue on. We were ready to be sued and go to court. And at the last minute, it was signed on December twenty seven, somewhere around December twenty second. They threatened me that they would sue us. I was mayor at the time. I said, my God, that'd be great because then we'd have the right to have discovery. I've got all these corporations and I listed them off by name. I knew them by heart back then. I said, I want to get the K ones from these. And see how many people are investing in this. Uh, they signed the papers. Uh, December twenty seventh, it saved, it brought Timmath in as a payer. It saved the town in no uh. Wellington several million dollars right there on the spot. Um. The problem with doing the east-west is if in in the. The Day family took us to court and they won. And in the court documents, even our new attorney, that's gonna go off here in a second, but you stole a little bit of mine. But um, um. I read the findings of uh Judge French. Our new attorney has never read the findings, you know, it's it's a lot of people just doing the the bare minimum. I read through the findings of Judge French. If we do anything that harms their wells in any way. They can take us to court again and we have to pay for the damages. Not only that, we have to pay for their attorney's fees whether they are successful or not. They can file a lawsuit against us and what are we gonna do? Probably settle out of court for big numbers or. Have to pay the damages. Now, Richard will talk to you and tell you what the damages are. But um, since Richard has become president of the association. And some of the people that we've learned not to be able to trust or get good information from. Uh, everything's turned around quite a bit and we are at the point to shut this thing down. We are. I've been pushing real hard. We are prepaying our notes now and we took the highest. Interest rate note and we've paid it off in full ahead of schedule. And they've been sitting on big old buckets of money and I said, no, we're, we don't need the big buckets of money. Start paying these notes down. It's taxpayers that are are paying for this and let's just get this thing done and shut down. We'll turn it over to Richard. I gave you kind of a fast version, but you can ask questions.
We're in hopes by twenty seven, this thing will be paid off and done. Our big issue right now is settling this groundwater problem we have. We only need like five acre foot of water. The city of Fort Collins could do that very easily. I'm trying to convince them that someday that's gonna be a park. There's no reason why we would have, what do we, a hundred and some acres there. That's just sitting there growing weeds and they they they're gonna fence it and they eventually. But it sits in a very good spot right off by twenty five. We've got that access. Uh, there's a golf course just to the north of it. Uh, there's no reason why that can't be done and if they would just. Designate a few acre foot of water, then you'd have some water features. A lot of things could be very nice. Uh, City of Port Collins is saying, well, we don't do those kind of things. Well. How in the hell did you get City Park? I don't know that how that ever happened, but. Anyway, uh, we're hoping to do that, but if not, we're hoping to be able to get the days. To agree that everything we're doing is okay. We've been doing water monitoring. Our wells have been monitored. Their wells, we've got monitoring on their wells, so we think we're in a good position to do that. They were supposed to have been negotiating this before tonight's meeting. Well, after about, I don't know how many phone calls and emails. I finally got over saying, yeah, I might might got around to it yet, so. I was fairly stern that, hey, we're gonna have a meeting on April twenty sixth. And I damn well better have some answers, but then you're all gonna get fired.
For two to three months, they knew about.
Yeah, they've known this since, and at our last um board meeting, we went into executive session and we had. Hundred percent unanimous. Board that we want to get this solved and want to get it done and get it behind us. So it it really has been a pretty decent deal for the town of Wellington. We've been looking and Patty's looked and everybody's looked for what they call exhibit A. Which is supposed to have been completed by uh Mark Peterson. And Rex Burns after the dredging was done. They were supposed to go in and re- resurveyed.
Well, it should have been the volume metrics of the bottom of what we dredged out.
Yes, well, that apparently hasn't been done. We're still looking for it. Uh, Brad March was nice enough. He got ahold of our attorney at that time was great, quite great, quite, not returning calls. So, which I'm not surprised. I would kind of recommend to this board that. Mark Peterson from Laramore County, and I represent Laramore County and the town of Wellington on the board. I would kind of highly recommend that being you're paying the majority of the bill, you get yourself an engineer and do this. Because to do the volume metrics this last time, Mark went ahead and hired Ayers, who he worked for part-time. With no competitive bidding and the town shouldn't have to pay for that.
We've fired Ayers due to.
Yeah.
Briarly report and a few other things that were just so far out of whack. And uh, we. Got the, without going to a a a legal battle with them, suing them, I think they gave us two hundred fifty thousand or something like that.
Yeah, that's not supposed to be public. But.
So you didn't hear that? Oh, wow.
I don't know.
There was a number.
Anyway, they they did agree that they'd made some serious mistakes. But the whole thing was serious. I went on the board to start with because. There was a lot of things being said that weren't true. They were talking about people that died down on county roads.
Fifty-two or?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, yeah.
Yeah, I believe or sixty. And yeah, they did, but what we're doing on. The Coal Creek side had nothing to do with what they died. We did, we made no changes to that. So that was, and they talked about the schools bring the flood plain. Well, after a year of questioning, how how deep's the water gonna get in the school? Oh, well, it doesn't ever quite get there. But it will run down the bar bit next to it. So, well, do we need to spend this kind of money? It did do quite a few things. It got Sixth Street out of the floodplain. When they put the stoplight in at Sixth and Cleveland, that cost a lot of extra money because it's in the floodplain. If you can get that kind of stuff out, you can save the town some money. So those kind of things should and. Of course, at that time, they were planning to grow, go north on Sixth Street. Uh, and it just hasn't done that, so. Um, maybe it will eventually and that'll help. So if you notice those bridges that go there by rice. Uh, if this would have been done, those wouldn't have to been put in and there were several million dollars spent there. That was kind of a waste of of the developer's money, but at that time, Fred Zickler had more money than God, so it didn't matter. But it's something that now it's the thing that we've done. I'm in hopes that if we don't, I'm gonna be very stern. We're not gonna get into some kind of a lawsuit that we possibly can help it. That will tie up and eat up a bunch of our money that means we can't pay out by twenty seven, twenty eight, somewhere in there. And at that time, Wellington's gonna get some money back. And that money's gonna have to go to um. Flood relief or. Something on the on the water side. I don't know how you'll do it, but that will be an issue. And it will be over a million dollars. And some of that's happened because Tim got, kept us out of what they call County Road fifty-two. And County Road fifty-two is the one where right across on the north side of our process project. And you'll notice there's some big drainage tiles that went under the road. Well, when we got ready to put those in, Mark Peterson had signed the. The papers that said that pipeline of Anheuser-Busch was like seven foot deep. And because he was the inspector at the time. And he said in two of our meetings and guaranteed us to know that it's deep enough and not have to worry. We potholed in town. It was only three. So we had to pay Anheuser-Busch to shut down over Thanksgiving holidays so we could lower their pipeline, put it in. But we did keep Wellington out of that. If you go back and look at your record, you'll see fifty-two had its own project. And Fort Collins, Laramore County and Tim that paid for that. So that's kind of the reason we haven't haven't had to pay as much and that's. Money's gonna come back to us at some point in time. And the reason is we have to pay. Our fees and Wellington has a stormwater fee that's tied to this. That's where Laramore County has a problem because they don't have anything like that. So they just bill. The citizens that are in the drainage and so hopefully when we get this all done, this will all go away. And it's it's went from a thirteen million dollar project with thirty-three million dollar project. So the citizens have a right to be upset. I'm upset. This has gotta be the most frustrating thing I've ever been on. I mean, Lee Tucker and I sat there and voted no and voted no. We'd get out loaded three to two. So, but we can't help it. Now we've kind of got more of a unified board. Uh, the mayor of Fort Collins is on the board. She's been pretty helpful. Actually, I was quite surprised. And so, um, she's kind of on board that, hey, all we want to do is get it over with and done.
So where we are today, there's some water on the east-west section. Like Richard said, there's augmentation cost on a ongoing basis. That augmentation at today's water isn't. Bad compared to the cost of doing. If we do the project though, and we get within so many feet of one of their existing wells. Uh, they can just say you damaged our well. They're having problems with two of the three wells that are in that area. And since we've been doing the analysis of them, um, we're finding out that they're cavitating on one. They're they're. Sucking air, they're they're holding a cone of depression that taking the water out and it takes a while to recharge. Uh, in order to water their their crops in that area. It's very easy for them to say that we've caused the damage if we do anything on that east-west section. We had a unanimous vote of our board. That we would not do anything unless they signed an agreement that if we put in a drain in there. To eliminate that surface water only a few feet deep, that they would not come at us legally. So that's where we're at. We're trying to get in an agreement with them, um.
We've proven that what we're gonna do is not gonna harm them. So, but if they've got an engineer hired, we've got to convince him. We've got to convince him and we just have to do it right. So that's all there is to it.
What else I gotta do and say that you do file a lawsuit and then uh. Big main government that's stolen their family farm and ruin their organic business. Uh, will probably settle out of court at some number in order not to have to go to court again and lose. In another court issue. We had the top attorneys in the state helping us at the time. And they said our total exposure would be no higher than three hundred fifty-eight thousand and it ended up over a couple of million. So we're real careful about that. That's where we're at. That's 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 what we're dealing with coming up to the next meeting.
And that meeting's April twenty-sixth, correct? And you're hoping to have clarification from the days in a legal agreement before you guys make a decision.
Well, we're just the hopes that we can, that are what we have put forth. The days are gonna agree with and that this will work. That's what we're hoping for. If not, at least by then we're gonna know why they don't agree and what we need to do to go on. So because Conell will do the balance of it and they did a very good job on the last. I was. Very pleased with them, but they can do the balance and they can get pie then. I mean, you can't, we did this what, two years ago? You can't even imagine how much more it would cost today than it cost then and it went very well.
Now, the bike sport doubles the cost, trip more than boss.
So I also heard Mr. Seaworth say that we should consider implementing engineering on this. The board and then.
Trust much that Mark Peterson's involved in. He came to one of the videos here and he gave us a set of numbers and I'd go back and work the numbers and they didn't add up. And we followed them back in and we went to uh meetings at the county. And every time we got a set of numbers, they didn't add up and then we ended up. Getting proper billing. Agreed to with the other entities. Your, our numbers were right on and we had Mike. Doing those to start with back in the old days. And I mean, he wasn't phenomenal account. He he had it drilled down. But we had so many issues come up.
Question from Mr. Seaworth. So you also mentioned the dedication of five acre, was that for the Clark Reservoir piece? From like the park.
Will that be for the area by Budweiser?
Yeah, no, that's for the area.
Or so that, does that like become like storage or is that just like dedicated just for a public purpose?
That does is we've exposed the groundwater. So the state uses a formula that when you've exposed groundwater, now you can have evaporation at three foot per acre. And there's about two acres, little less. So we have to replace that completion. And that's where our problem is and the city has plenty of water to do that with. If we could convince them to take that on a long-term basis. So we just haven't been able to do that. Um, we wanted to buy some water to do that. It's difficult. I don't know how many there have been over there, but uh, the gray lake set above there. And I mean, that whole area is a beautiful area. It really is with beautiful views and. Uh, it could be made in the one beautiful park in open space area that the citizens of Laramore County can then City of Port Collins use. So and originally the bike path was to come right up to Box Elder Creek and connect everybody on a bicycle path, but. I don't know how come that hasn't happened. I I don't know.
Got that underpass on I twenty-five for that and everything. Um, yeah.
Um, thank you. My questions.
So, question in this, just to make sure that I'm understanding, because I know you'd mentioned the survey has not been done. Was that a Clark reservoir or is that somewhere else in that survey?
We're trying to find. The historic survey.
Okay.
Because that would be our baseline.
Okay.
To what we have today.
Okay.
If we have to do another one, uh. You're the major payer.
Right.
This, you need copies of that certified and maybe just have someone they'll check or something rather than have a second engineer do it. But um.
Okay, then you guys recommending if can't find that that rather than waiting for someone else's engineer, the town should look into potentially just. Maybe hiring a firm to go do that.
Well, I would suggest that next time, we're gonna get by for this ten-year period. But in thirty-three, the town's gonna have to do it again.
Okay.
And at that point in time, I would not allow Laramore County just to say, oh, okay, Eric. And we're gonna pay you extra and of course, they complained that North Pooter didn't tell them some things that they should have. North Pooter denies, so you've always got the back and forth. Well, anyway, is this cost more than it should have cost? Now, the authority paid for it this.
Okay.
But next time it's, you're gonna have a million dollar fund that. The authorities putting together to make sure Clark Lake stays good. So, but then from then on, you're gonna have to put fifty percent of the money.
As you depleted.
So the city.
Twenty-five.
And you folks have inherited a lot of problems. And this is a problem I'd recommend aboard twenty years from now. There's an inherent. And care of it so that it's kind of done correctly, okay?
That makes. The other question I had is I know you mentioned Laramore. We we have the stormwater fee built into our section. Um, the fee that Laramore County charges to people in the drainage, that does not apply to within the town of Wellington. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
Wellington pays Wellington's everybody and those of us that matter, I gotta build today from one of the farms.
So, well, you do have onclines here and they should be paying, but then the payments were. Pulled out in a very beneficial way to friends of people. If you go through and calculate by the calculation that's supposed to be done. Some of these people that are paying sixty dollars should. Some of these people that are paying sixty dollars should have been paying seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Is that for that and for the service calculation? They still do it based on?
Yep. Now, a lot of people are paying it without knowing it. Some of them are upset and they don't want to pay it and they throw the bill away, but that's added onto their tax the following year. And then that comes back in and we've made sure that all of that accounting, all of that billing. All of that issue is being paid for by the county because that's their service. They have contracted separately with Pinnacle to do that.
Okay.
Initially, that wasn't the way it was set up.
Okay.
Got it. And this this past year is the biggest. So the people haven't paid more this year than it would have been that year. So that tells me that things aren't quite as rosy in the real estate business maybe as they like.
Since you had good development here, Fort Collins and Tim. Well, Tim Nass not in that. The county's had some, not a whole, but they've had some. But Fort Collins has had a lot of development down in that floodplain area. Uh, the service fees are bringing in more money to the authority. And rather than letting it that there and figure out new ways to do things, uh. That's paying the debt down now.
I appreciate that because that helps to get rid of the up and down costs of carrying that debt. So I think that's really a lot of wisdom there. So thank you for pushing that.
Have a system set up to start saving for what they're saying we need to do by twenty twenty three, which is have that deficit.
But there'll be a fund.
But you said as it gets paid down, we'll need to account.
You're gonna have to ask him. So so basically you will be paying off.
And those numbers used to just kind of disappear and you couldn't get them and how they show up on the financials and I audit those. And by that point in time, you'll have over a million dollars that being sent back to you and you could put it into a Clark Lake fund. Because that's what it was built from. Uh, I went back and forth with Brad March saying. The way the ordinance went was this is a fee for the box over stormwater of forty. You'll have to do something. Between now and that period of time, because that money is it's like taper. That money is designed for this. You can't take that now and go build a. A storm drain over by the high school or some pressure.
Sounds like another. And we're we're aware of it on the radar. So it will be coming to us. Well, it'll be so right now. We just we do our C I P like five years out. We don't do the. So it'll be something that'll just come to you all in a year here for more than five years.
But that's a great way to replenish that Clark Lake, because that's what it's for.
Another question I had is I know you guys said the goals kind of have things more or less set and done by twenty seven, twenty eight. That happens, assuming all goes wonderfully and nothing goes wrong between now and twenty eight. We hit that point. What does that mean in terms of what engagement do we have moving forward in the Box Elder Authority?
You you won't dis Clark slate, just Clark like. Take the fees off.
Okay, so we would all the fees that are currently on bills would go to zero or would they just be decreased to go to zero?
They should go to, well, that'll be up to you.
Okay, it's up to you, you know, but you'd have to change the way.
Okay.
He worded to keep it. It's like. Governor Polis said that he was gonna give us all this money back while Tabor ran out. We got the money back, but it wasn't purported to the people that paid it in.
Right.
Uh, you've got that issue too.
Okay. Got it. So with the million dollar and guess looking really far forward. Obviously, we can't do drainage stuff on other parts of town, but can we do on, can we use that fund? To work on drainage projects within the floodplain area of the Box Elder area.
Legal question.
Okay.
Have to do their turn that.
Okay.
Not prepared to answer that one.
Well, that'll be the money that should be getting back that you're gonna have to do drainage somewhere within the town. Or where wherever you want to do it, but that's what as a fee payer and I paid.
Right.
Drainage fees. And now that I've paid too much and you get the money back, it still needs to go to drain.
I look at it from my properties that I paid it for the Box Elder Authority project that was being built. Once it's done, I shouldn't be paying those fees anymore.
Yeah.
And you can't, if there's twelve hundred bucks there, it better go to the box called the storm water.
Right.
Or I want it back.
So then what is the the plan for ongoing maintenance and operations beyond sunset?
Just Clark Lake. You guys are responsible for fifty percent of anything that's required on Clark Lake. Now, when um FEMA did the Lomar, the the new app reading of Clark Lake. That bottom of that lake had to be presented to them. It's gotta be in that.
I am certain I had some time over at Old Town Hall looking through documents today.
Yeah.
But I've I've got lots of people looking.
And the people that we. They come to our meetings and they still watch. Uh. Uh, they they were responsible. They know where it's at and don't want us to have it or. Um, they lost it.
I really don't believe they ever did it.
They had to have done it though, because they had to admit that with the Walmart.
They were supposed to, but I don't think they ever did. So anyway. Uh, I I think it was just another one of those things that we are. And Mark Peterson just failed to get it done.
We followed Larry uh quite a bit to find out which properties came out of the flood. And they said, well, that hasn't been done yet. Um, when we had that meeting December twenty seventh. And we had Jeffrey Khan involved with us, we found out that Laramore County never even signed the agreement. So the agreement, the authority wasn't legal.
So and by the way, that's just my opinion that what could have happened the exhibit A. So I I really don't know for sure. I had given people month and a half, find that nobody's come up with it. Our attorney at that time was definitely in great white. Like I say, Brad tried to get him. Well, that would be Brad to give him the answer.
The care should have it, because they they have. And then I think that the federal government's got it. Uh, I think it had to be submitted with. Because it verified that we had done what they requested around to prove that and take us out of a floodplain. And that's where the agreement to continually maintain a north Buddha, Laramore County and Fort Collins came into play.
So what does the timeline look like for feedback from the board on those two items?
Well, we're.
The 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 discussion about um engineering and then uh. On the the day farm.
Oh, okay, that one, we're supposed to be. You're supposed to be starting negotiation with the day pretty quick. And they're really not negotiating. They're just, we gotta present what we have and say, okay, this isn't right. You tell us what we need to do to go forward, to make sure it's right. So and and think that we're in pretty good shape there, but we're hoping that the day is gonna say, yeah, this is the way it is and it'll work. So April twenty sixth, our engineers and prophets, they would have all this put together along with the day's engineers. So they could come back. We could say that's supposed to be the date. Actually, the date was supposed to be in yesterday, but. This is typical the way the works and it's very, very frustrating, but I think. We get this done and that'll still give us all summer uh do the project and it's not gonna take uh very long to do it. Uh, it's in two to three weeks, so it's just a matter of getting in to Connel's timeline so they can make it work.
So I attend the meetings, the Box Elder from my boarding units um along with my charity. So I will report back after that April meeting, let you know what the status is.
Yeah. But you didn't notice it's public meeting and so.
Thank you for your continued efforts in this. Honestly, it's I I've read through a lot of the minutes through the link that was provided. And have probably that much education on what you guys actually deal with on a regular basis. So it's not something I could say that it's my ambition in life to under. And everything about it, it's a lot to understand. So I'm very grateful for the work that you guys do. Could it feel very comfortable knowing that we have you guys both sitting on this board? I think you guys are actually fighting for Wellington, which I think is awesome.
Yeah, I'm pretty sensitive to the Laramore County people too, because. You say both sides, so I I really think we can get this settled and not have to spend too much more money. That's so much money wasted here that I'm very disappointed.
When it first started out, it was supposed. Any government project is supposed to have a cost benefit ratio. By doing this project for thirteen million, two two million five hundred thousand or twelve million five hundred thousand, thirteen million. They figured that it was going to have a cost benefit of twenty six million.
And across benefit hasn't went up any.
Probably, you know, a lot of that when they came out of the floodplain and they developed a heck of a lot of stuff down there. And uh, those houses jumped in price as they're coming back down right now. But there was an increased benefit ratio, I guess. Didn't get any of it in my lifetime.
You guys have any further questions?
No, thank you.
All right.
Well, thank you, John.
Where does get. Call if you have any questions on your representative mind.
Trust me, I've got box and box.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys. All right. I'm gonna be municipal code with uh.
Good evening. Uh, we're gonna, Charity and I are gonna tag team this evening. Just myself again, Nathan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. Um, so we are bringing forward some potential updates. We'd like to just with you guys and have an opportunity to get some feedback related to chapter thirteen of our municipal code. So chapter thirteen is uh addresses municipalities. Um, it was last updated uh in August of twenty twenty, which doesn't seem like long ago. Um, but that update really was focused specifically around some wastewater and um kind of cross connection control. Um, I don't know about concerns, but then elevated up to us through a meeting with the EPA. Expansion and efforts like that, but with new stat came on, both Charity and myself, as well as some additional uh promotions from within, right? So we got a couple new superintendents and in our distribution collection and our system. There's been a kind of a deep dive into um chapter thirteen and trying to figure out if there might be some process improvements and some identification of. Of needs of some changes that could be made. So um in back of this evening, there was kind of a brief memo. That really highlighted kind of five areas where we're looking to. Give you a high level overview and get some feedback from you on some proposed changes. So I'll jump right in and take the first couple. And then transition over to charity a bit. Um, so the first um kind of dive, go ahead. Is in, that's too far. There you go. So in um with the expansion efforts that we have going on. So our multi tens of millions of dollars expansion effort at the water trip or water reclamation facility. Uh, we were looking at some of our processes related to our ability to have a pre-treatment program um in place to help protect. Our new infrastructure, to be honest, to help protect our existing infrastructure. Um, and then especially with this new coming online, as you guys um may have noted and you'll see in in next week's packet of the the monthly. The update there, um, we have actually exceeded our regulatory requirements or limitation for. Um, nutrient loading to the wastewater treatment facility. Now, we are also exceeding um accept. Seating at the treatment of that organic loading was coming out of the backside or effluent is more than meeting our requirements, regulatory. Um, there there's no fines or punishments associated with that. The biggest thing is that you're to be under construction, which we are. So they know that we're, you know, solving that problem, but a concern is making sure we don't get here too quickly again next time. And one of the ways we can do that is making sure that we have appropriate measures and a ability to ensure protection of what we're um. Those new facilities that are getting built. So we were kind of doing a deep dive, especially my florist who's not able to be here. He is at home online to correct me if I say anything wrong, uh, but he had uh he was at the dentist today and I can't believe.
Poor guy.
I know, um, likely what I told her. So anyway, um, he really had done a really deep dive to make sure that. Everything was spelled out appropriately for us to be able to enforce, to develop a pre-treatment program and. To enforce it. And what we found was that there was some some contradictory language um that resulted from front of updates. There were some um duplicative language, which gets extra hard. And then there was some some things that were missing to really allow us to kind of create the kind of a preaching pre-treatment. And then also um some of that language that we're looking at probably updating um. Could be related to our cross connection control programs or like our backflow prevention program that we do already have in place. But there are some missing pieces around how commercial customers need to report those um flow tests to us. Um, the uh maintenance records for for uh these onsite too, that kind of goes back to that pre-treatment program like grease interceptor interceptors. Um, so most that is uh would look like and would probably be a little bit more detailed when you get like a red line version. But in the end, really compared articles one, two, and three and kind of came down to being able to eliminate entirely a whole article. Uh, because all of it was already captured in the recent updates in article one. Um, so bringing statements from that um up into article one and the rest of it's really just cleaning things up. There's no um substantive um alterations to. Things in that section though, and we're detailing your personal things. We don't, we don't do that way anymore, just then I think of the progression of the towns. We've got larger and after more things by fee schedules, by resolution, how we do our tap fees now. Um, all of those things are lined out in a tap fee schedule, which I think maybe in the past back long before we. The staff was here. Um, you know, tap fees related to anything larger than three quarter inch tap, I think, came to the board. Google on pricing and and water supply requirement, but we handle all of that differently now. So just sort of cleaning up. That language, that's that's none of our cakes, the right word, but no longer relevant in our current operations. There's a couple of things like that that came up. So with that in mind, I wonder if any, if that level of detail that was provided in the packet, which wasn't huge. But if you have any feedback or concerns around um kind of the kind of changes that might be made in those. Uh, just sort of that, almost a language cleanup effort.
I did have one question and possibly one issue, but this depends on how it you. Explain it back to me, I guess. It says during the rate update discussions of board at Trump these and fall twenty twenty two. Versus the board's success to suggest that staff consider a variance path option for non-residential customers. Who may place less weight wastewater to the town facilities. And does that mean it variancing the cost? Does that mean not?
Yeah, that's next. Yeah, that's next one. So that's I was trying to break that separately. So this first one is really related to uh the water wastewater and then collection and distribution cleanup efforts that were targeted in like a five bullets or four bullets in your packet. Um, is if you had to keep up on that one and then I'll all. That volume was one next though.
And you kind of spoke a little bit to it. The thing that I had a question on was the um adjustment of the three quarter inch taps. And I I was wondering if we haven't done that forever. No, and it just that's more of that is just when we talk about bringing on larger tabs, it typically means there's gonna be a larger strain on the system. And I don't know if that was the reasoning behind that coming to the board in the past. But I don't know when and how that all was changed, because I don't think other than PSD, we've never talked about a tap on the board since I've been on it for three years.
Super a long time. I we they haven't talked about that since when I used to sit out and before I could first step back that they, and it was because we just had very, very minimal development. So issuing a big tap like that was a strain on the system and it was it was just a small town thing. That's just how they did it.
Of analysis, expectations bringing in the development to show um your top size means around the system. And and to have done the cost analysis to determine the cost with those varying top sizes and stuff. I just, and it doesn't really alter anything. It just feels like a cleanup.
I just wanted to make sure we're not losing level of control. It sounds like we've already got this controlled elsewhere. So that was it. I was like, from taking it out is we've got another way that we're managing that.
It's actually much more responsible.
Any other questions? This is just more of a curious is to the shift from sewer water. Is there, I I I just was curious and I don't know why.
So honestly, the in the research that I have done, our wastewater enterprise fund is the wastewater enterprise fund. So the language in the enterprise. Um, adoption is the wastewater enterprise fund. I think over time, it's, you know, got translated to sewer. Um, and it's more of a just a term that got a bunch and it picked up along along the way. And I'll be honest, I know in our, you know, I think I use the word rebranding effort. Um, that we have going on, really trying to kind of follow the trend in that we're we're. In the water, treating it to a level we can put a bottomizer. Um, I can, I could say it because he's not here. Um, is I think that can can create um confusion in terminology because I think of storm sewers as a sewer. And so it helps clarify the different, you know, differentiation between stormwater infrastructure and our wastewater infrastructure.
Thank you. I was just curious about that. And that looks good to me.
Um, I'm curious for uh grease interceptors, what type of effort and cost might be associated with that for those commercial user?
Uh, there shouldn't actually be any initially. And so we had, um, okay, let me back up. Cause I'm sure he's. I also do have with me, I should point out, Mike was unable to be here, but Jesse Tollis Rude, who is our operations supervisor for collection and distribution is here and he's definitely our grease tap guy, our cross connection guy and all things pipe in between um and meters. But um, I would say that the people who have grease traps, grease interceptors, not traps, interceptors in place. There's a required maintenance program that goes along with that. And we currently already have it in our code that talks about that they need to be maintaining that infrastructure. There's the reason that it was required was to help protect our infrastructure. One of the biggest changes that we're looking to make is that we are, it would put language in. Yes, but those records, so their annual track and see if production, their impacts to the system is changing. They're having to pump more often to have they change processes that maybe we should just learn more about. So without, I mean, and then also I have been um this, as we develop this program, so this kind of which to get it in place just allows us the kind of groundwork to be able to develop a program like that. And as we develop this and do a lot of outreach with those commercial customers, which is the goal, I can't believe it's already almost March. But is to have a program like this developed through twenty twenty-three that we can kind of start rolling out in twenty-four, which would come with it that's not, it wouldn't come with fines. It would come with a lot of education and outreach and coordination. So this is really what we'd be looking at. Just making sure, um, because I'll be honest, when you, when we see like a nutrient, a heavy nutrient load at the wastewater treatment facility, it's like chasing a ghost.
Yeah, no idea or.
So um it's a lot of it is just building those relationships as we grow as a community with, you know, with restaurants or other facilities, you know, um, can't, is it Cameron? Yeah, um, yeah, just other large, there's plenty of others. We have other, I think some people don't realize the breadth of actual industry we do have. We do have some industry here for sure.
Just to follow to make sure, just clarifying, I think I, but the cost associated with is the maintenance of the grease trap, which they're already required to do. We're just simply stating, please give us documentation. So a piece of paper, an email stating what you've already done. So the only quote unquote additional cost would just be the time or whatever to send us the records that they should or now if they're not doing it, that's
Right. Okay, okay. Yeah. So initially, for sure, that's what that's what we envisioned that program beginning with.
Okay.
Um, but we're still in the nascent stages for sure, kind of putting that together.
This is pretty typical on on.
It is, we have, and it it's really typical for growing municipalities, right? So if you go to like Fort Collins or Greeley, where they have really robust um treatment, treatment programs and pre-train programs, they get, they're really serious. They'll have like a whole, they have a whole staff that's larger than like our, one of our treatment facility staffs that's dedicated just to to getting out and building relationships with the community, making sure they can, they're sampling. Um, they'll require sampling for for different industries. Um, and we may get there ourselves, depending on the kinds of industries that come in. Um, and again, it's just, it's really looking to protect the infrastructure that we have in place and. Numbers confused between the two facilities, to be honest. Um, that's probably the product that's gone out there. So, and we definitely not looking to burden, to place more burden that is necessary, finding stretch on like on the commercial industries.
So would this help decrease the amount of affluent that is actually going to the wastewater treatment plant if you're catching it preemptively?
So typically it's not about um volume, so it wouldn't be the flow, it would be. And it can, it can decrease it. The hope would be that it would be uh leveling off the loads that would be coming in and decreasing the risk for kind of spikes in those organic load. That's what can kill bacteria and the by kill the biology and really post behind the eight ball and have them catch up. Not to mention it lowly, but surely there's this like ever increasing rise and we're gonna get to our limitations of our new plant much sooner than like to, and then we've financially been planning on. And it will be a little, there's a little bit of 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 work for staff and probably more more work for staff than there's gonna be.
Collecting all the data.
Yeah, yeah, and building the relationships. You know, having that point person.
A lot of businesses trying to circumvent the system on this.
Really, I mean, people are generally um for industries are generally aware of the hazards that they create, right? There's.
We have pretty good fines for them if they do like continually.
You know, that would be something we would come back to to the board um for. Um, and I could maybe see that at some point in the future. I wouldn't speak to it being in twenty-three, but maybe, I mean, it does get to a point that um if education and outreach is not helping or working together. Then and there are communities that have very, can have extremely significant fines. Um, but we're, you know, we're, I don't know that we're there yet, but.
The only thing people understand.
It is true. That is true. Now, there is language, if you want to get into the detail that talks about that if you're continuing to uh, we can shut off your water essentially. So those halt production for most things, that's pretty impactful, but that's, I I don't see us going there. Most of the entities members that I have communicated with already and the industry people that we've spoken with are, they would like to work hand in hand. I mean, Cameron is communicating with Mike Flores as far as superintendent right now, because they have regulatory requirements they have to meet as well. So they're pretty, I've not had anybody try and sneak it. Any questions on that? All right. So the next one is, so this we're bringing up because um we were bringing lots of other things. And if if we would choose to do something like this, I was recommended by by at the end of that, it, there should be some language included in the code just to reflect it. And uh, this stems from just my recollection of 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 a lot of conversations that were had during the rate discussions and approval process late last year, related to some of the more significant changes that we're looking at for the commercial wastewater um rates in particular. And if you remember, um, those rates, the way that those rates were calculated changed insofar as away from a winter quarter average for commercial customers and we're now charging them based on their monthly water consumption. And there is a a factor in there that reduces that fifteen percent reduction factor to account for a lot of businesses have things that leave the business or there's irrigation or there's other. Water, so we're not claiming everybody. Um, there was a request or inquiry around, is it feasible to create a I don't, and variances of is a big term, so maybe that's not the right term for this effort, but for lack of a better one, um, because I'm an engineer, not a clerk with all the right legal terms, but um is um a a variance option that would allow at the customer's burden, so it would need to be customers burden, if they really felt that their wastewater, whatever they're meant, their their commercial industry was, that they were not sending as much water down the main as was coming out of the tap, right? So if they just weren't sending as much wastewater down in water, that they could, there could be a variance path for them um as a volume reduction to their um rate calculation. So it wouldn't be um trusty teeth to kind of come back to, not to think I know where you're going, but um, it wouldn't be a rate reduction. A uh, the customer bound, the drain is originally, and then any rate change would just be reflective on a a smaller volume. Um, and this was some um, I'm, I I haven't been approached. I mean, it's very new. You know, because our, all of our customers have only received one bill with the new rate structure. I haven't been approached by any commercial um customers to date. Um, I just, I do remember this getting brought up and I wanted to just kind of slack because the world has been crazy and we've done a lot of things here since last fall um and kind of touch and take a feel on where the board might feel on this topic, if there's a direction to pursue it or or not, or sit tight or kind of looking for. And or to even tell me that I made this up and it wasn't.
Conversation. So you remembered. So you said it would be on the customer's burden to prove the, how much they're actually dropping down the drain. Who does the reporting and how do they report to it? Do you, do they contract an entity who works with the town to come and do that reporting? They track their own data and turn it in. Can that data be manipulated?
Um, I have not flushed the a program like this out early. I think that there, I I think that, you know, I I I don't think I would have. Let me see. So by phrasing it, I think we would put the onus of proof onto the customer. It wouldn't be in the way of of necessarily, because it's kind of a good deal. So it wouldn't necessarily be in the way of you just tell me how much. It would definitely need to be through a more rigorous vetted process than that. So whether it's um um, you know, tracking some kind of flow meter that they've got in their drains, um you know, something to that effect. And I I think it's, I mean, engineering wise, technically wise, I think it's feasible um to to do that. I think it wouldn't be without effort on the customer's part, though, for sure. Um, what that level of burden is, I'm I'm not sure. I would need to dig some more on that. And so that was before I we we went down too too deep of a path with it. I kind of wanted to test the waters again and confirm that it was direction we wanted to go.
Yeah, I think the question is similar on those lines. I'm I'm assuming there has to be some type of technology out there, whether it be like a flow meter or something that can and I would say that probably what would make sense in terms of a program like this, because we want consistency, right? We don't want to have a hidden process for one business. Is we find a technology or something and just say, if you desire to do this process, you purchase this meter, you pay to have it installed and then that reports back to the town. And I think that's the best way to go about it, because then it's a consistent process. There's no variation. It's not like, well, this person uses this meter and this person uses a different meter. And then we can have, we can build our process around one set way, but basically rather than us going and paying to install it everywhere. It's just, if you want to use this on your business, you bear the cost of it. Now, hey, if I'm paying gonna go from paying thousands of dollars in sewer to a hundred dollars in sewer, absolutely makes sense to pay for that. If it's like it might lower my sewer bill for ten dollars, yeah, maybe I'm not gonna go pay for that. Um, but I would say, I think that would be the best way to go. So that again, having a consistent process that doesn't vary the business to business.
Would this be an option then for residents as well if we want to blanket across the board? I think that's when you start getting in.
I I based off the information that you provided on the previous slide, I'm against this option altogether. Because, okay, we're talking about what we're putting down to be treated and it's not clean. So if we put it into like, let's say that they manufacture sulfuric acid. And they only put their dump down the drain once a month. But because of the content of what they're putting down the drain, it still has a significant impact on the system. Now, if they are constantly running water with that, like it doesn't may not have the same effect, then it's diluted, right? So how are we going to measure and
That's the problem.
So I just, I think that that gets way too complicated and it just is not a good idea. And that's why. But then there's, okay, well, then what exactly is in it and how much of an impact does it have on the treatment system? Because somebody who's dumping large contents of Kool-Aid down, the drain is very different than a large content of. So I I that, based off the information on the previous slide. The reason why I think we should consider.
I think it's a good idea. We would definitely figure out a way to not just read volume, but read chemical levels. That does get tricky because I think there's a lot of chemicals out there that not one solid thing could necessarily read that I know of. But I think, I think it's good. I think it's, it's a good way to go. I think it's wise of us to allow variants. And so we're bringing in much water and not putting much on the drain and, you know, they're not putting down dirty chemicals. I think that we should treat them fairly and they should have a way to seek a variance.
What if they provided proof that they were treating it the way before they put it down the drain?
That's also on them. You know.
Cause that would be my biggest concern is, you know, if if they're doing some sort of kind of measure to try and treat it before it goes down, so it's less harmful, I would yeah, a little bit more comfortable with that idea.
Like if they have specific requirements within their industry to do that regardless, you know, that might be something that they're already testing and.
Right, they're already implementing, you know, we're just, you know, about.
The one thing I think is important is when we're talking about the rates in which we're in rates and general costs that we're doing. I like to go back to the main purpose and goals of like the roundtable as to what they were trying to accomplish. And one of the major things is the summary, I'm not gonna quote it word for word, because I don't remember, but my recollection of it is pay for what you use. Like that was a big part of it, to be fair. Um, so I'm just gonna throw out an example right now that would be incredibly easy to measure, wouldn't require any kind of monitoring or or anything. Let's say there's a business. Monitoring or or anything, let's say there's a business in town that. Sells filtered water, right? So they can tell you exactly how much they sell in the volume of that water that goes out of the door. And you know that that's not going to the drain. So a business that uses and filters water and then sells those in giant jugs, for example. You know exactly what they're going down the drain, or you know what's not going down the drain, because it's walking up the door. So I think there are different scenarios, of course. But how you treat them and differently, I think is is something that does require a. It requires someone to consider it, necessarily have a rule this, that, this, and then only measured in this way all the time. And that process of measuring if it's more expensive than the savings, that doesn't really say that we're trying to. Be fair, right? So I think I think it should be considered, I don't know how it work, but that we we don't know that right now. But the the question we're asking is, should we consider it? And I say, the whole purpose of what our rates are and how we're billing was to be fair, and I think this is an attempt. To compromise and to be fair, so if it actually works or can come to fruition, that's a great question, I don't know, but. Should we kill it right now? I think absolutely not.
Yeah, I agree, I think we should try to figure it out, yeah, I think I like the ideas of, can we measure, are they treating it, what is the strength? What what is going down that I think, I think that's why you have a process, right? And I agree with trusty daily, it's not just. One set thing for everyone, the thing I like about the. Volume portion, because I think we do need to know the volume of what they're putting in, you can be putting stuff that's not. Highly toxic, but if you're putting a ton of volume down, our plant still has to deal with that regardless of. How toxic it is, but Mayor Porten brought up a great point, we also need to care about what is the toxicity you're putting in, because that's a whole nother thing that we have to deal with, so if we can. Figure out in the process, I think the volume portion should be consistent, that should just be. This is how we measure the volume. For everyone, because that's volume is volume, but then I think we also need to look at, okay, what are you putting in, that might have some variation, because you know, if you're. Doing the filtered water. That might be a different process versus your manufacturing chemicals or things like that, and so that might be where the variation comes in, based on what are the, what are you working with?
Yeah, and what you guys are talking about volume versus content, and that all comes down to what we originally were considering the cost of service. You're paying your fair share of what it actually costs to service you.
Yeah.
So that might be different in different scenarios, but if we're bringing it all back to the same measurements, same type of, this is where the equity comes into place, right? Um and well, not from considering other considerations, but like in a fair sense of power billing people. If their cost of service is lower, then it's fair to charge them less money, so I think that's, that's good, and then the other comment about um. About residents, I think the only reason why we have this make this consideration for commercial users is because there is not a method or reason. That allows us to have um a good sense of wastewater, but since we are. We know that the majority of variance of variance such a. We know the difference significantly from some months the other is outdoor irrigation, then with that knowledge and that. Data, we know that those winter months are the. Of wastewater, so if we have a very. To do that, I don't think there is a reason to do that necessarily, um because we see such consistent results already in the cover. So I don't, I don't see a need to do that, because I I don't think there's a concern.
So with the rate structure and looking at it, when they sat down and this, the sewer and water round table sat down and did the calculations for rates. For this year, were they working on the basis that it was going forward with your January to March averages from this previous year? Will that change the? Changing costs go up if we see commercial costs go down depending on what they're using, because the average wasn't taken on the commercial basis, correct?
No, the rate study was done with um based on monthly, previous years' monthly water consumption. For those commercial customers, so the rates that were developed were with the knowledge that we were pursuing. Um um monthly usage.
Right, so now, so my question comes is, with that being estimated like that. And if you see those commercial costs go down because of that consumption, will that have to, will it inevitably raise the rates for someone else to cover those? Base costs?
Um, go ahead, the way that ordinance was written, your residential rate structure is very different than your commercial and it's built differently, so if we. Adjust the commercial, it's not gonna affect the way we structured our residential.
But would it affect the commercial rates?
Uh it, I guess. Theoretically, the answer to that question is yes, because the the way we developed our cost of service was separate, right? We developed cost of service irrigation, cost of service for multifamily, cost of service for residential, commercial, so it 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 stays in that commercial class. Um and I mean, frankly, yeah, we don't, I mean, we talk about growing community, we do have more commercial coming. Uh but we still have a fairly small bucket for our. Our water and wastewater. Um, yeah, so I mean, the theoretical mathematical answer to that question is yes, that money would then have to get picked up somewhere else across. In another year, I guess.
Got it.
I know this can't be a unique conversation that's been having. And I keep bringing up, what are other communities doing, are other communities doing things on this for variance or not?
I don't, I haven't dove deeply enough, dived deeply enough.
So we're pretty unique in even talking about this at this point.
Um I think for our size, I think for our size, um now is the time to be starting to have these conversations, right? Because we are crossing that for some reason.
Saying, we, if if other communities have done it, we don't really need to recreate everything.
No, no, there there will definitely be resources available as we dive deeper into. How other communities are doing it, what what rules, how they've implemented it. Um.
And more or less, you're just looking for a direction, whether we want to pursue it or not.
Yeah, if you, if we want to spend staff time researching into this and and as a reminder, also on part of that rate discussion. Was a recommendation that came out round table for the wastewater. Round table, but um was to 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 consider, wh- when we did have staffing resources to consider the ability to be. Also charging wastewater rate that does take into account those loading factors, so they increase loading that those, and that was just not something that I. I don't know if we're gonna be able to get there for even twenty fours, because you, yeah.
How would we measure, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a lot of thought that has to get put into that, um but it's definitely on the radar and it is, it is the direction that in the end we would like to be heading.
Yeah.
Um and that is kind of the best practice, if you can get there.
I think I think this matches that I precedence, because you're saying. You know, there are changes in what you pay based off of the cost of service of what you're, the service that you're receiving. So I think this is exactly that same argument, but that we're just maybe not mature enough at this point or have the technology available to do. So I think this is setting us up for that path.
Yeah. Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to speak to was if we do. Right theoretically, mathematically, if we see a decrease on the commercial side, then there could in future years be a shift on it, but. That would be appropriate, because if we're seeing the only if we do. On the commercial side is if they aren't portraying on the system, right? If you can't prove, I'm not gonna constrain on the system, your bill should go down, because it means that that usage is actually being picked up on the residential side.
Um, keep in mind that that, again, that costs us differentiation, it's not that, um it's not that the residential side would be paying for it. And it it means your other commercial. Are picking it up, so we, the way we developed and based that. Be spread over the commercial, yeah.
The board think it's a good idea for them to pursue.
Yeah, I think it would encourage conservation down the road. And definitely uh efficiency, so. If we could figure out a proper way of doing it.
So how how I'm looking at this then is kind of the direction is to, the first step would be to move forward with how we can. Look and see what other communities are doing, how can we implement perhaps a vol- a volume based one first? In line with how would that tail or dovetail rather with. Um or could it dovetail with um more robust kind of loading monitoring, monitoring loading monitoring too, so we're trying to get to the place where we're capturing. All of it, just stage that, phase that.
Discount, a better word?
Yeah, I'll come up with a better, I don't, I guess technically it might be a variance, but.
And this could be a good way to roll out the the loading is that if you want to look at reducing your wastewater. That you have to prove your loading, so maybe that's how we start, we don't roll it out everywhere at once, we start it within this area, figure out how it works. And then we have a discussion as to whether it makes sense to roll that out down the road. That might be something to consider as a, a way to do it too.
This is, this is, that's great, I know I have some stuff that are gonna make side of that. Start tackling it honestly, so wonderful. Um modification, Bob says modification. Thank you, I feel like we have direction, I appreciate that. At this point, I'm gonna kind of roll it over, this turns into the charity show and I'll help if I have any um.
So it's actually been an internal discussion that Megan and I have probably gone back and forth with for months.
I'd say almost since you started.
Yes, um our code, and we don't have an internal policy anywhere that gives clear specific parameters on how we handle water leaks. Um and so we're kind of batting our heads back and forths, trying to figure out what justifies a discount. Um what does it? And I think this is accelerated right now, because with our new tier rate structure, when people, when residents or commercial customers have a leak, they're going to feel it. That much more in their pocket, but because they're gonna be billed at the highest tier for that excess water that's going through. So we as staff have been talking about this clear up until this morning um. I don't know if it's gonna necessarily be a coach change, but I think we need to have some sort of internal policy that's very structured that lays out. What the parameters are for water leak relief and how we would reduce the bill in the event that then happens. Um I did lay out some ideas in the memo, um you know, we definitely don't want this to be a situation where someone's applying. For this relief multiple times a year.
Right.
Um but I think we as staff would benefit from having some clear parameters on how we handle these situations moving forward.
I like, I'm sorry. I was gonna, I was gonna, I was just gonna say you. I actually like what you have here, like, I think the one and twelve month period is good, um I think that's the only thing like in terms of like setting this timeframe. It's from bill period is just depending on that, if you get complicated. We're all busy and they can't find someone to fix it right away, that could get, but maybe what we do is they must show within. Days of notifying the town that they have, you know, three more weeks from this date, they've given us a date that this is when it will be like letter of intent. Yes, like letter of intent or something that just says, I've engaged this contractor, they're going to fix it, and here's the date they've given me that it will be fixed. And so it's more so that like within a specific period. That's a short period of time, they have to show us, I've got some, either I'm fixing it or someone is coming out to fix it. And then maybe we have a longer period, I mean, we want to be like, hey, six months from now, he's gonna come fix my leak, but.
Well, there could be specific times where if it's winter and they can't dig it underground. They might not be able.
That's a good point, so yeah, so maybe we just focus in on this is. I've engaged a contractor, they're going to come and fix it by this point, and as long as it's fixed by that point, then.
And we're gonna waive the extra.
So.
Well, I mean, I mean.
I think the customer has to provide proof of repair to receive the bill credit. So even if they're six months out on having it, great, you're gonna get it fixed in six months. I still think that they shouldn't be reimbursed until they can prove that that repair has been fulfilled.
Well, and I think the other question then would be, do they get a credit for all six months? I appreciate that something might happen in a bit of time, but then.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, there's other. Questions I might add to, uh well, one of the things in here says, uh historically, the town has handled these requests on a base by case basis with inconsistent results for the customers. Do we mean inconsistent results in terms of identifying where a leak is, or what what do we mean by inconsistent?
Sometimes the town identifies a leak, but because of the way we were billing previously, it wasn't such a financial impact to the residents. So they just kept paying the bill and not addressing the water leak.
Hmm.
Um which also brings up another issue of when would we get involved to shut the water out before they fix the leak? Um some of it is, you know, depending on where the leak is. Um it changes how much they use, so if it's a leaky toilet, it's not a whole lot of water. So we have to just see what's leaking, when did they fix it, um what was the impact of their sewer? Rate because of the winter water usage was higher than normal because of the leak, all of those things. It's inconsistency because we don't have a clear structure in place of, okay, this is a leak that's qualifying, this is a leak that's not.
Sure.
And and I would say like, because we don't have that, like the the last thing you just said, so so a squeaky wheel. Might get get uh some relief, whereas somebody else who didn't think about that there could be a process for that would not. Ask for any relief, so then that doesn't.
And and I think, you know, obviously for the board's consideration, what I would say is, you know, ob- obviously there's a huge difference between your faucet leaking. Versus if I lose my water heater or something like that, right?
Right.
Um and. Uh the other thing I'd be wary of too is encouraging. You know, if you've not replaced your water heater in twelve years and then it goes out, I mean, is that? Is that our fault to pay for that water that, it's because your appliance failed, is that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's where I'm at, like, we do the one time in twelve months.
I think for the. Twenty four months, quite frankly.
Uh, no, because. You can get multiple, you can get different leaks, right?
Absolutely.
So I think it is on on the owner of the property to maintain their property, know what's going on, fix the thing, shouldn't be on the town. Yeah, and I think I do like the one billing cycle, like, I mean. Yeah, i- if it's not caught and dealt with, I'm sorry, but I mean. That you gotta ask some other questions, but at the same time, it's like, we have to pay for that, we still gotta treat the water, we still gotta pay for the water. Yeah, and that money's gotta come from somewhere. And it's like, if.
Well, they pay for the water, right?
So if I, if if we say you have a leak that, for whatever reason, isn't dealt with for three months, whether it's your fault or whoever's fault it is. If we come back and, you know, your bill's normally sixty dollars, but it's a hundred and one, we offer three months, we're basically, the water utility is subsidizing a hundred and eighty dollars. Of water costs that you wrapped up because of the leak in your home. But I think I like the idea for one month. If you get it all repaired, we'll reimburse that, but beyond that, that portion I think would be on you to to work out.
The scenario that I'm thinking about is not a leaky toilet or uh, I'm talking about like underground.
You know, like water.
Emergency cost twenty thousand dollars to fix scenario that. May not be noticeable like physically, so they may not be like, oh, I'm looking at my property and I see nothing wrong and taking care of it. And then a lot of those things aren't based on maintenance whatsoever, so not on the ball, not at the ball of the resident. And let's say you have. So you're you're, you know, so I I I understand the scenarios of those, but those would be very obvious, right? And you would be able to fix them immediately, and if you're not, then that's, you're not, right? Situations, I think, that have a really significant cost for long term, I don't even know how long those, I'm thinking twenty four hour fitness right now, so about that scenario. Those, those are the ones where if it crosses over billing period. Multiple billing.
Something so large leak like that, it's your insurance, your property homeowners, whoever.
And that's not, maybe that's part of policies, exactly that, if we see someone's bill maybe more than doubles their monthly average, they get a notification, hey.
So.
And they already do that.
They do that, yes, that's what I was saying, if that would already be set up. Procedure that when we knew our utility billing, you notice a very large spike in consumer water usage. We send a high usage notice saying, hey, you use much more water than normal, you may have a leak. Contact plumber, get it checked out, what they do with that is. But we have in implemented that process, because it's another failsafe for the town to protect their.
But I will say one thing on this, one thing that was concerning to me that was mentioned is, if a customer chooses not to fix the leak. If the customer chooses not to fix the leak, they, they're fine paying what they're paying. Shutting off somebody's water, I don't know if that should, that is an option. If they're paying their bill monthly, they might have a leak. But if they're paying their bill monthly, or is this only the discussion for implementation on a bill credit for? Someone who called and asked for it? Cause I won't agree to shutting off someone's water.
But their leak is still great and they're just wanting to pay for it. It's still increasing how much strain is on the system.
But they're still paying for it.
Right, but it's an uneven string.
But that's their private.
That's the town's issue. If our water plant can't keep up with water production.
And I think these are significant, significant scenarios. It's not.
This is like, this is, you know, the last resort.
Significant, really high impacting.
But there's also situations like what if? It's a senior citizen and they have a heart attack and they die and they leave their sink running. I mean, those kinds of situations happen and so they like. The, the monitoring of the usage of the water treatment plant is so precise that on a daily basis. They can see if there's something like that happening. And then that triggers the staff to start looking at the, the utility usage amounts like, okay, like. There's obviously somebody here who has some high usage going on. She'll probably look into this a little bit. So then that kind of. Gets it going in that direction, but at that moment, like. Staff needs to be able to have the ability to go and shut the water off in the event of an emergency or if. There is a, a situation where our, the infrastructure is. At risk. So I, I know where you're coming from, but we can't, like, we don't know what happens behind closed doors. That person could be dead, they could be alive, they could be using it to water their plants all day long. I don't know. I don't care. But if there is all of a sudden a significant spike or change in the usage, staff needs to be able to protect. As Mayor Chelsea said, so I think that, you know, if it's an ongoing, like they just let that drip happen all the time, that's gonna show is their normal usage. It's not gonna be a spike unless all of a sudden they turn the other one on to grip too. So I mean, we're talking about catastrophic events like in the event of an emergency, not like somebody who's being negligent so much.
Is that the understanding though, is this is an event. So I have an example. So I have had a resident specifically reach out to me about an issue like this. And she has a slow leak in, on her property. She cannot pay the fifty thousand dollars to go in and repair all of this. And she pays a higher water bill because of it, because she can't afford that huge shock to her cost. So are we saying that because she can't afford that cost, then we're gonna go and shut off her water?
No, that's not a spike. There's. I think when we talk about spikes, we're talking about, you know, there's a fountain coming out of your. Not like, hey, I, you know, my bill is always fifty dollars higher a month because I've got a leak that's going up. That, that's why we went to the tiered system, right? Is that? Well, if your leak pushes you into tier three, congratulations, you're getting a ton of money for what, but you are covering that cost. So I don't, I don't think we're. Looking at and I wouldn't support saying, oh, well, this person you've got into tier three, but it's like. The only time that we should be considering sending someone out there and honestly, I can't think of a situation where I as a homeowner would not want staff to come shut off my water because in that. I'm like, nothing really not good is happening. Please turn off my water so that I can figure out what's going on.
I would generally think in our climate here and with our, I mean, this is something that happens in California, Nevada. I mean, it's a real deal if you're highlighted to be. Using water outside of your watering time or. Right, and I don't, I don't think we're there yet. There are other communities in Colorado though that I'm sure do have policies that where they can go out if there's repeated, but it, it wouldn't be, you know. Two months of contacting somebody. I mean, we would never, the town would never. Well, I mean, we would never just willy nilly shut somebody's water off. I, I mean, it would be some kind of serious last resort due to a. True risk to our infrastructure as you both have stated. I don't see that. We can even address that in a later debate.
I would also say, in the event, say. Something happens at the meter pit and you have a hundred thousand gallons of water go through and now your water bill is equal to your mortgage for one month's usage. Do we as a town let that continue to go and have them incur those costs or do we shut it off? To stop that leak?
I really hope that you would do that. Turn it off so I can understand what's going on.
I, I, I think the point though is that we're certain, certainly we are going to approach the homeowner and say. This is what's happening and. Would you like us to shut it off?
So we'll ask. I guess that's the, the most important thing that I'm looking at.
I mean, we, we have always. There are the instances, for example, that Jesse had, and I don't know.
Exact issue happened to me, which is why I'm asking this question.
A neighbor was out of town. A neighbor identified that there's water running into my yard from the neighbor's property.
I always.
Have thought about that and the neighbor was out of town. That particular neighbor had. A hose running in the backyard, they're watering something. They didn't turn it off. They went out of town. They flooded their property, running into the other property. So it wasn't in their house fortunately, but so we, in that instance, yes, we went and. We made all the phone calls we could make. We didn't get ahold of anybody. We shut it off. Then we got ahold of somebody and they were ever so grateful. As we saved a lot of money and damage. In, I mean, it's, it's that sort of thing. I don't think we're looking at.
It's actually happened to me too. I had some uh irrigation line break, freeze. And they monitored it. They told me that there was high usage at that point. It took me about four or five times with my irrigation people to get it fixed, but you know, thank God they did. I mean, there was a couple. Hundred bucks for like two, three months straight before I finally got fixed, but you know, the city was on it and I really appreciated what they did at that point.
I think this particular piece is, we're not looking to be the hammer. We're not looking, this is not a violation. We're not mad at you. We're trying to protect you and help you. Or you, and I think that's the goal of that particular piece.
Right, you didn't give me the option to get money, any money back though. But that's okay.
You don't offer that up. We'd be broke. I'm teasing. Back in the day when you had to pay for text message by how many it was. Say your kid goes nuts and you had no idea that bill, you call in, they're like, we'll fix this for you once. But you need to handle your kid, right? So this is the same. We'll, we'll fix this one. Be accountable going forward. I think that is really nice. And then if that were me, I would really appreciate that, especially if I had no idea. So. I, I'm in favor of some kind of policy like this. I don't know the exact numbers, days, billing cycles, but I think we should do something one time.
In favor, yes, in favor. And I think proof is vital. Has an equation with someone like, oh, I had a leak. Filling up my swimming pool.
Seats, receipts of your own purchases.
And then do we wanna look at, I agree with like, once every twelve? Month, like, should we do something that's like maybe no more than two times in a three year period? And no greater than once in a twelve or just leave it at once.
You never know how, I mean. Okay, you never know how often leaks gonna occur.
That you can't control.
Some other question, but then the whole thing is if you're on vacation, your neighbor doesn't notice.
Thousands of dollars that's coming out of the town. Do we have a cost cap?
Think the way most water leak policies are structured is that you're gonna be paying at that. Tier one or in our case, the tier two rate. So it's not gonna be a drastic decrease in your bill, but it's gonna be enough to financially help you out. So we can look at how we structure the policy and what you guys are comfortable with. I think just getting the parameters of how you wanna have it. Set up and brought back to you and then we can talk about the dollars and cents later and. How, how much assistance we want to provide.
Yeah, cause we were still, like she was, Charity mentioned the cost recovery piece is still. Right, so we still be recovering some of it, but able to provide some, some relief in these unusual circumstances.
A balance of that however.
And we could even look at like adjusting, maybe there is a cap, but then if you go beyond that cap, then. You become eligible for like the HUD grant or something like that and that could be used. Maybe if it's like, hey, you went beyond this. I don't, I don't know.
That's where, that's where like.
That grants very specific. For emergency purposes.
I guess my question, where does the money come from?
Oh, the government prints it.
Because, okay, say Sam and Lori live next door to each other. Lori decides that, you know, she's, she's got a leak and she wants somebody to pay it. Well, Sam's gonna end up having to help pay for that. So it is, I mean, it's.
That's where my question.
It is, it's from a staff perspective, we, we, that's what we see, but we know we get these calls from the residents. They're like, what are you gonna do to help me? I can't pay this. And so we historically municipalities have offered assistance in some. Some sort of fashion or like the one time leak that you show that you pay for, but we end up, I mean. We end up paying for it. The town.
The next door neighbor will.
Yeah, that it's split out and what's the rest?
So my question is, where does that money come from?
Question, I don't know if this is possible from your community. You help each other. But question, is it possible to do something? And again, this is just a crazy idea, so I don't know if it's possible. Something like in, not mandatory, but like insurance, right? Where you can say if you paid two dollars, if you want leak insurance on your water bill and that goes into us. But if.
Holding on to residents' money opens up a massive amount of liability.
Thank you. That's all I needed to hear.
There you go. You should follow it, but your insurance. My hundred and ten year old house does not qualify for any of those insurance coverage. So just though anybody who aware. You gotta hold that whole house, right? Yeah, so just know that.
But for newer homes, they could submit a massive water bill that's a couple of thousand dollars into their homeowners. And they should be able to give them some reprieve.
I mentioned that insurance guy said no.
We recover damage caused from the leak, but not for the water.
So I think that's more reason that we should consider it, but not all of it. Just like whatever.
So we'll work on a policy probably instead of a code change. Specific issue and we'll bring it back to you with the rest of the chapter thirteen code changes. Uh, billing a meter reading date changes. So this is something I had brought to the board. I think last summer. Um, we're bringing it back because after my review of the code. We had been billing that was not fluid with the code, but the way we were billing was easier for the staff. So I have proposed some dates for how we're going to do our billing changes. And I think the biggest thing is we need to implement a delinquency letter process that goes out mid-month. Letting residents know where they're at with their water bill prior to the shut off. Um, so most of the changes are not inconsistent with practices that had been done previously with the exception of the.
Comes up.
I'm on board too. The only question I wanna understand on this is. How far out is it from the delinquent? To the shut off? Cause for example, in February, we say the third, the third Wednesday of the month is shut off. Well, Wednesday, the third month, third Wednesday of the month was the fifteen. So is it like if? If I'm delinquent in January, right? So January twenty fifth is the day my bill is due. I have not paid that bill. Now on the fifteenth of February, I'm getting a delinquent letter saying you are delinquent on your January bill. At what point am I getting a shut off?
The way delinquency works, you have to be thirty one or thirty one days delinquent before you get a notice. And you have to be sixty one days delinquent prior to shut off. So your delinquent letter comes the month before the shut off.
Right, so basically so.
Thirty days.
Okay, so basically I have a least a month. From the time I get my delinquent letter to the time that they would come out, the third Wednesday to do. Got it. That part is good. I like the addition of the delinquent letter. The only concern that I have is because I know, for example, I'm in Old Town. We don't have mail delivered to our house. Most of our town does not have mail delivered to our houses. It goes to a P O box. Not everyone checks those on a consistent basis. But I mean, if there's a month between the delinquent letter and the shut off. That, that was just a concern I had because, and I understand the idea of not trying to have staff go out there. We don't wanna make you out there all the time. Um, and I understand that piece. The challenge though is that. At least when we have someone out there, we know it is on your door. Versus, we don't know if it's sitting in a mailbox. We don't know if the post office lost your letter. That's how this happened.
Same thing with the door knocked open too. It's easy to say, oh, the wind blew away.
Yeah, and I've had to sign up for, at, at the post office, you can sign up for a service when you're not home often and they scan it to you and shows you your. Are those delinquency notices?
Sorry, I just think that's funny. I didn't know that was a thing.
Well, it say something like. Important notification, delinquency notice. I mean, that might be.
The thing is tricky because utility billing information is. So you don't want to be putting that out in the community. So I would have to look into what parameters we could do for that.
What about a color change on the envelope?
Clear window and have a bright.
Like the E four seventy delinquent issues, any kind of different colors.
They get brighter as they go later.
We could definitely be looking at something like that. I think if we implement the delinquent letter, it becomes more of a notification process for the residents and. What I've seen in other jurisdictions is when they get the delinquent letter, a lot of those payments get made. Stop that door knocker process because that gives them the reminder, oh yeah, I haven't paid my water in like three months, probably get that done.
Um, I was one of those people, like a few years back. I would wait until I got the notifications and like, oh crap, I should probably pay, but. Water bills were a lot cheaper then, so it wasn't as a massive of concern of me. Now it's auto pay, so it just, I can't forget if it's auto pay. What happens? It's really great.
Old teams of bears.
Do we have phone numbers for all of our utility customers?
We do not, and you don't have email addresses for everybody.
Is it possible to look into? Cause I know there's like automated phone messages too that are an option to see what that would look like is maybe an additional. I don't know what the cost would be to do something like that, but maybe we look at that as not to have like an automated, like a next. Either a text message, but even like an automated, it's like if you, cause if you don't, you have a landline. You could do like a robot saying, hey, this is a notification from the town of Wellington that your water bill is overdue. And maybe that just gives another touch point. Cause that's my concern is that if for whatever reason the letter doesn't get there, if we can have another touch point. But if it's gonna be a huge cost, then it doesn't make sense. But if we can do that for fairly reasonably, it's not taking up, other than recording it. We're not having to have a staff member sit there and make all the calls, but if we can automate that, so it's to, and it doesn't have to tell you details, it's literally. And that can go to everybody, right? You have a past due bill, please contact the town or check for your.
And as a reminder too, though, like. They have, they have, they've received a past due notification on every bill, right? So they're, they're, they're many, they're mon- they're months out overdue. It's showing that every month that they get a bill. They have received at least three things.
I think.
By the time you get to.
This is. Yeah, no, I think it's good. I just, that's.
That's an interesting idea though. I've not heard that. I'm, I'm sure it does exist.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive. I mean, we looked at it when Kelly and I were back in Windsor and it was not a cost. Was not something Windsor was willing to pay for, and I don't even think they do. Was not something Windsor was willing to pay for, and I don't even think they do.
Didn't you hear, we're getting a million dollars?
That we can spend on a leak.
Piece to this would be our door knocker process and how we notify the delinquent accounts and shut-offs. I think with implementing our new billing cycle structure and sending out the delinquent letters. Um, it would kind of replace how our door knockers are being handled now, because. Ten billing days prior to shut-off, it's a delinquent notice, and it's.
How many do you have, on an average, from mom?
Hundred and fifty.
And how many days does that take you?
It's, it's two guys, it's two guys, one full day.
They could be doing other things.
A lot better things, getting out of the truck.
It happens times, the same one is over and over and over again.
It's the same, it's the same ones. Like when we, when we deliver them, when we catch people out in the summer, like, we don't call them shut-off notices, they're billing reminders. Here's your billing reminder, oh yeah, I better go ahead and get that one paid.
You know, one thing about it too, if they get the water shut off. If they have a little bit of a penalty to start it back up again, they might be a little bit more proactive on doing. But we, but we try to be out, but it doesn't set them all the way through the process, it sounds.
Some of them, but there are just some people that are always gonna be in that cycle of dropping here to pay.
I know.
Um, I would just say, I think our current structure is very inefficient and it. Doesn't spark that urgency to say, hey, I have to go pay this because we are getting shut off. Um, so by replacing our nine-day. Nine-business-day notice for the door knockers with a delinquent letter. Um, we could reassess, do we really want to be sending our staff to people's residence to hand them a shut-off? Or do we change that structure completely?
I would change it completely, in my opinion.
I I say we test it and see, like, if I like the addition of the delinquent letter, we already kinda talked about this on the last time. Um, but I think we just need to look and see. Doing a much better result by doing the delinquent letter and not doing a ten-day knocker, fantastic. If we start seeing a worse result, and it's not working, then we need to revisit it, but I I say, let's, let's, let's try.
But it is like revisit if needed.
We can check back at six months or something. But after the code adoption.
Yeah, yeah, so let, let's go with the proposed change of going the delinquent letter in place of the door knocker. But let's monitor, I mean, you can see what the numbers are today, you'll be able to see what the numbers are once we make the change, and then just report back to us and let us know, is this working? Is it working like we anticipated, or it didn't work?
Probably too, is you're gonna have to have a door knocker to tell the people that it's gonna be a change process too. Right, because they're so used to doing it one way, they're just gonna be looking at it the other.
So the question is, with these delinquent letters, it tells you what your shut-off date is in the letter. So does that mean that town staff, once this code adoption is changed, on that day of shut-offs. Anyone who hasn't paid goes and gets shut off, and we pay something to their door to let them know their water's been turned off.
Okay, I like that, we're there anyway.
And so that way you reduce the amount of trips that staff is taking to residents' homes. And hopefully it will reduce how many homes they have to go to on a monthly basis.
And if you guys can just work out whether, however, we're gonna communicate this, obviously, we can do social media, but. You guys, as you know, the frequent flyers, you, we can work out whatever. Giving them extra notification that their process is changing would be good.
Is there money in the budget for breakfast for the front desk people that are gonna take? Well, that is hysterical, because yeah, until you. The calls you get, the people that come in, chips on the shoulder. Yeah, some people are really great, the majority are really great, but you do have to, you just gotta hold them.
That's inevitable. Okay, so the last item I have for you guys is the landlord check tenant changes. Um, right now, we have no structure in place. On how someone can get a water account in their name. Basically, it's fill out an online inquiry and we'll switch the account over. What we're finding is it takes a lot of staff time to switch these accounts out every single month. Um, we have tried to be creative in figuring out solutions between the landlords and the tenants since.
That's messy too.
Um, well, we tried to send out a landlord utility bill and we got. Mixed reviews on that. We don't have any clear structure, so what happens is a renter will move out, and six months later, the landlord calls and says. What, why do I have this amount on my account, because it's supposed to be my name, and we have no notice, because none of that's being communicated between the landlord and. The tenant. Um, the liability we hold on unpaid utility bills from these, specifically, is. A lot of money. And so we're looking on how can we provide this service or not? And make it efficient to where we can hold these property owners and their tenants accountable.
Trusty Gator.
What is the normal amount of the bill, a delinquent bill, that would be on an average on that? Two hundred, four hundred? How much?
It ranges, sometimes it's two hundred, sometimes it's a thousand dollars, it just depends on the renter.
You would think that landlords. Would have an idea of what's happening, I mean, maybe screen their people. Well, they sure as hell should. Well, no, I mean, as far as doing credit checks and all that, I mean, that's pretty much typical way of doing business. Right.
But your Excel bill doesn't report your credit.
Well.
Unless you put on experience.
And is it, is it a lien against your property?
Yes, you totally those, because you cannot shut off the sewer system. It has to be debatable to the property, because we have to provide that service no matter what.
And when we do a lien on a property, do we send it to the property owner at that point?
The property owner gets the lien through the county, and then when they go to pay their property taxes the next year, we receive that money back. And then the way this process has worked is every time we send a lien, we. Terminate that account and set up a new one, so again, it's a lot of switching of accounts and information.
They could have three or four liens against one property, or recurring the time.
Well, the challenge with those liens is that there is one liability error in that lien submission, then it gets thrown out and we lose that money.
They could be pretty tough, though.
Well, you have, so you have to have a really experienced clerk that's processing those liens, otherwise, when we send it to the county. We're not gonna get that money, it's gonna get thrown out, so if we could just collect it on the front end and put the landlord responsible, I like the DeCono model. Put the, the landlord needs to be responsible for it, their name is on, on the title, they're the one that's responsible for the taxes. And it. We can, I, I think our billings offer to do that, where the landlord is responsible, and then the tenant wants to be like a care of and come in and pay if they can, so.
But that should be the la- uh, the landlord setting it up as such, I mean, if he, he needs to protect himself at that point.
Well, and that's the challenge, is that we've let anybody come in and be able to set up an account, and so that's the burden, is that. Staff is gonna have to contact these landlords, and they're gonna, the landlords are gonna be really cranky, because then they. I, okay, I am a tenant that pays my own water bill, so now my landlord. Is gonna have to change how they bill me on my rent every month to include the water, so it's an extra step for them, but I don't care. They're the landlord, they're making money, it's an investment property, I don't care. So, yeah, so I, I think that we need to make sure that we're protecting that utility and go.
So the major opposition that I took to heart last time I was talking about this, is any utility assistance would require that that utility is in your name and those likely could be renters.
So.
Thank you.
Um, we've application actually asks if the water bill is in your name and if not, give the reason why. And then there's also a section of that we've application where if the landlord has that water bill as part of your rent. They will contact your landlord to get a copy of the lease to help you with the water, that answers my question.
And that was my concern, the question I have is, so like the DeCono, and I agree with, um, Mayor Protown, I think that's a really good way to do it. If the, if I as a landlord say, I want to add my renters as a third party, my renter would receive the bill and they could pay the bill. And then I don't have to touch it, unless they don't pay it, so that kind of, now I can do either way, I can just say, I don't want them on it. I'll just include it in your rent, but if I say, hey, you handle the bill, it's your responsibility, and if you don't, then whatever, but I I like that way, so again. Only thing staff is doing is either adding or removing authorized third parties, and I think it adds a level two when you're going through grants, is. Your name's on there as the authorized user for the water bill. Then I, I think that that would help with some of the grants.
If there's a couple people on it, both of them would get the delinquent notice and all that.
We can set it up to where. Parties on the bill get.
That picture of all that problem.
By adding that person, you're giving express permission to know that somebody else is paying on your behalf, so if, if you get that huge bill at a, a certain amount of time, like you signed up for that. Eventually, you're not watching.
Express bill pay works, as long as you have an account number, you can log in, whether it's in your name or not.
I like to go.
Bye, thanks you guys, this isn't good. Like no more. Last chance.